To the folks there online, Joanna, can you, can you hear okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And by the way, Joanne, Joanna actually has a board meeting tonight, so she's, she's closer to home than, so we, we agreed to let her, to do it virtually because she didn't really, couldn't, couldn't join us if we, we didn't do that. Turn that off.
I actually had a budget meeting right before this, so.
All right. So we're just going to jump right in. Like I said, I don't, I don't foresee us having a need to be here till seven o'clock. We'll see how it goes. Depends on how much we dive into with, with Brian Perry here in a little bit. With that, that group of people in Frankfurt that we all talk about a lot at this time of year. So, and he'll have some stuff to tell you about kind of where bills are and which ones are moving and which ones aren't and that sort of thing. And then Shay Ritter from the Office of Finance and Operations will be here to talk about what, Larry? Seek.
That's a fair question.
And then, so those, so those, those topics, and then we'll, at the end, we will open it up if there's anything that is raised as part of, as we always do, is raised during the, during the time, if there's anything that I'll probably share a little bit more right here at the, at the onset of just the kinds, the things that are going on at the department. Other than the legislative session, are, we are deep into our United Learn work. We've talked about that here before. We have formed, there's a council that's been formed called the Kentucky United Learn Council. And it's made up of about 70 stakeholders from around the state. And they're providing a lot of guidance and, and so forth around the work that we're trying to do. Most of you are aware of the deeper learning project that's going on across, it's going on through the co-ops in each of your co-op areas, but all but, all but five of our school districts are participating in that, in that program. And I think all of, none of you all are the five that aren't. So, most of that work is happening with your teachers as they're being provided training. We also have the project-based learning work that's going on in many districts. And a host of other things that are going on across the different parts of the agency. You know, there's a lot of interesting stuff going on in career tech. Yes, Diane? Certainly can. Remember what to do.
No.
You didn't do it.
I'm sorry, Diane Berry.
Nelson County.
Nelson County. Oh, Nelson County. I want to know, project-based learning?
Yes.
I want to know, is that incorporated in our standards? Is that something separate? Explain to me this. How, how we, how do you incorporate project-based learning with standards as supposed to be taught with these?
So, the way I would, the way I would answer that question is think of project-based learning as a way of teaching the standards. It's not about either or, or, project-based learning should actually go deeper with the standards because it's not only teaching the content, but it's having students actually create things to demonstrate that they know the content. So, project-based learning is a, I would call it an extension of what you might call traditional instruction. So, it's, it's to say, here it is, I'm going to read this page and I've got the information off the page. Now my teacher's going to have me and maybe possibly even two of my friends, three of my friends, create something that in a public way can prove that I know it. So, I think of it as a, as a higher level of instruction, of, of deeper level of instruction. It's very connected when people say this thing, deeper learning, project-based learning is probably the number one deeper learning strategy used around the country because it's, it's ea, it's easier to implement because you can, you can train a lot of teachers, and that's what we're doing right now across the state, is we're training a lot of teachers to use it in the classroom. So, we hope to have about a third of them trained by the end of this next year. So.
Maybe that's not very attractive.
Okay.
I mean, where I have a problem. I have some of these parents that tell me, how can you give a student, how can you get my student an A if they can read it or math when they clearly cannot read, they cannot do math? So, how do you explain to them, which I tell them, you need to talk to your teacher first. I'm the, I'm the very end of what you need to know. I'm not in the classroom.
Right.
But they'll explain to you how it is. And they'll say, yeah, but they can't, why are they getting grade when they can't do the math?
Okay.
And I said, that's a fair question. I, I can't tell you, you know, example. This daddy told me that their son was going to expect, going to go to a different school system. And instead of a grade, let's say math, and they had a pay in math. They got to the new school, they could, they didn't know their stuff. They had to put the child back to grade.
Hey Linda.
And that's what I'm
Yeah.
to know. I mean, how do we know, the board members, how do we know that?
I think that's a, you're right up, you're right over here, Linda. Sorry, Linda.
I'm sorry, Linda, you got to say it. Well, how do you?
I think the, the thing I, the response I would have, Diane, is I think that's a really important question that you need to have with your school leadership people, your, your principals. And, and if you, you know, this is just a suggestion. I know a lot of districts where they have a rotation where, you know, a particular principal comes to each board meeting and, and gives a, you know, presentation, whether, just what's going on at that school. And it allows you to have, you to ask questions of, of each particular place. So, that's just a thought. Okay, I'm going to, I've got my friend Matthew here and I don't want to keep him in. He's been patiently waiting. This first topic is one that you all asked for. I don't know who, the one thing we didn't know from the, from those, from what we got was who sent the
That's why I did that.
That, I'm glad. So, we put this topic together with something that's going on and, and has been going on at the department for a little bit now. And Matthew will be able to tell you about that. But you all were asking about the use of pronouns. And we felt like that that tied in very closely with this kind of resources that we're providing on, on our website and in other, in other ways for LGBTQ students because that's kind of a connecting point for that. So, we're going to start off tonight with Matthew Courtney, who is the Policy Advisor in the Office of Continuous Improvement and Support at KDE. And that's, that's where all that stuff is housed. So, I'm going to let Matthew just give you, give you some, some words of wisdom here and then we'll, of course, ask any questions that you all have, so.
All right. Well, good evening and thank you for inviting me to the meeting. Thanks to the Davids here for letting me come speak with you today. As David said, my name is Matthew Courtney. I'm a Policy Advisor at KDE. A Policy Advisor, if you're not familiar with that role at KDE, our job is to pull together all of the information that we can find about a certain policy issue, whether it's state or federal statutes and regulations, whether it's research-based best practices and just the news, like watching the news is part of my job, to know what's going on with different issues and be able to be the primary resource of information on that. LGBTQI+ students' issues became part of my policy portfolio about 18 months ago. David and I talked before I came today and decided that there's been sufficient media coverage that I probably don't need to do a whole presentation for you and we can just open the floor for conversation. And I'll do our best to address any questions that you have today. And of course, we'll be able to provide any follow-up resources through David, the Davids, after the meeting is over. So, I'll just open the floor, if that's okay with, with you all, and fire away. Go for it.
Barry, Nelson County.
Linda, you came in late. We, we the reason Diane did that is we've got people virtually on the call. So, and they can't see your name tags, they can hear your voice, but they can't see your, so you have to tell us who you are and where you're from.
We had an incident last school year. Yeah. Let's be known to the board that there was a class that was, students were asking other students in the class what pronoun you would like to be referred. And it really upset me. Because number one, to me, it's private. Number two, they didn't have permission to do that because I had the instructor. And I said, did you know that they were asking these questions to freshmen at sophomore's? And I said, did you know that was going on? And she said, no. And I said, where did they get the questions? And she said, I guess, I guess they made them up on their own. And I told her, I said, you need to report it or I will, because they didn't have permission to do it. And like I said, to me, that's a privacy issue. Or maybe wrong? I don't know. But you to stand there and tell a kid, a student that's 13, 14 years old, what pronoun would you like to be referred to? What's your opinion?
Yeah, so I think from the agency, what we would say is that I think you are right to be concerned about curriculum and activities that are happening in schools. And if students are engaging in activities and lessons tied, tied to these issues, that needs to be no. And that needs to be acknowledged and vetted by the instructor and tied to the curriculum and the standards that we're teaching. I would maybe push back a little on the notion that all individuals would consider that to be private. We do know from research that youth as young as actually three years old have demonstrated a desire to identify in a way other than society has already identified them. And so I do think that you may have in our school systems, youth as young as 10, 11, 12 in that age range that you've described, who may have very strong opinions on what they would like to be called. Evidence shows us that using a student's requested names and pronouns reduces their risk of serious mental health by almost 70%. And so I think we would say from an evidence standpoint that while it is challenging societally, I think for some youth it is very important and could be a life-saving decision that that school has made. In this particular instance, I do think there needs to have been some conversation and consultation with that teacher, especially if that's been done during classroom time. You know, that's a slightly different, you know, very specific situation, right? So, I, I do think that you were right to ask if that had been vetted and considered by that teacher. That teacher, if that was part of an assignment, that's something that teacher needed to know. If it was extracurricular, then that probably was not an appropriate space to do that.
Brandon Rutherford, Madison County Schools. Have so many questions on this.
Go for it. That's what I'm here for.
When this, when this came out, you know, it was put out and kind of like what Diane said, we had, it's almost like when this come about, about teachers using pronouns or asking, you know, respecting whatever the child wants. It seemed like the end of last year, it took over our schools. So, it was like kids were running up down the hall saying, what are you? What are you? What are you? You know, we lost instruction because all the kids were just focused on, what are you? And so, and I think some of our teachers, you know, kind of ran with it that, hey, KDE wants us to do this. And we're saying, we want you to teach math. We want you to teach English. We want you to teach reading. And it's almost like the teachers were like, hey, but KDE says we need to respect these pronouns. We need to find out what these kids want to be. And I just feel like, and then that came out from KDE and the way it came out just completely blew out instruction time in schools because it was like we spent once and that's all that was talked about. And then from second part, the kids in high school, so you have, they're very influential. And every kid, everybody knows, you go into school, you got click here, you got click here, you got click here, you got click here. And they all run together. And it's almost like because this one says they want to be this pronoun, or because this one's friends with it, now they're like, I want to be part of that too. So, it's almost like it got lost and we wasn't explaining it to kids what it was. We just had teachers saying, what pronoun are you? What do you want to be taught? And I, I think that was a big issue. And I think the way people put out the KDE to the teachers, the instruction reports, you know, to say to respect this, I think it could have been dealt with a lot better. Does that make sense?
It does. So, a couple, a couple of things that I'd like to respond to in that. So, first I will say, KDE didn't put any new guidance or information out about this population until July 1. We intentionally waited until July 1, knowing that teachers were going to need time, districts were going to need time to process this information and knowing that it could disrupt instruction. Part of why we put that guidance out is because, as you said, it already was disrupting our instruction. And so, within the agency, we are a technical assistance agency. We exist to funnel the money and to answer the questions. And so, when we start to get sort of a critical math of the same question, that's what triggers us to put a document together and release that. And so, what you were expressing, what you were seeing last spring, we were phones ringing off the hub, right? And so, that's when we decided, okay, we need to put some clear guidance out on where we stand and where the research stands and the policies stand on these issues. And like I said, we waited until July 1 intentionally, knowing that if we release it during the school year, that that would be disruptive. So, I do think, but let me also say that KDE has never instructed teachers or administrators to seek that information out. And actually, we frequently advise against seeking that information out from youth. So, if you have people telling you that, we are telling them that they should survey their kids. I've heard that, not just, not just here. I've heard that in many instances. That is not what we are saying. And in fact, we think it is very dangerous to be surveying kids directly on their pronouns. We would advise against that in almost every situation. So, I think that's important. There's a lot of kind of misinformation about some of that. Our guidance does say that when a student expresses a desire to use a different name or pronoun than what they are registered with, with the school, that you should respect that. And then as I mentioned earlier, that has been well documented to significantly reduce mental health concerns in this population by as much as 70% in some studies. And so, to us, that's a significant impact. If, if something as simple as respecting that request from a youth, a youth can have that measurable of an impact on their life, then we think that it is the best practice to do that. I'll also say that there, there's a larger literature on sort of names in general. And so, requesting to be called by a name other than what you're registered with is not a new phenomenon, right? My dad's birth name is Neville. I didn't learn that until I was 17 because we all call him Wayne. And that's what they always called him. So, the phenomena is not completely new. The social implications of it are different than they were certainly when my dad was a youth, right? But even for, for any youth, being called by a name that is important to you and significant to you makes a difference. And so, we would say, and, and we say very clearly in our guidance, all youth, regardless, this is not an LGBTQI+ issue, this is a youth issue. Calling youth by the name they wish to be called makes a big difference. I can tell a personal story from my high school experience. I had a biology teacher who was a football coach. And so, my last name was Courtney. He called me Courtney. I really did not like to be called Courtney as an adolescent youth. That is a girl's name and I am a boy. And I wanted to be called Matthew. That's the name my parents gave me. I'm proud of that name. I'm proud of the history of that name, why my parents chose that name for me. Don't, please stop calling that. I'm Matthew, right? That is very important to me. And I'm sure we could go around and everybody has a name. My little niece, she calls me my Matthew. And so, like that is very special. And I know she's getting ready to go to middle school. She's going to stop calling me my Matthew. It's me really deep. But, you know, names carry weight and significance. And so, our, our guidance is that you should respect that. Our guidance is not that you should solicit, that you should survey and collect that. It is youth-initiated. When it is youth-initiated, we believe you should respect that.
Mary Dodson, Odom County. Yeah, one question though. We deal with this type of stuff where I work at. A guy's named John, they call him Dave, what have you. Can a school system get, because we were getting legal issues with it. Regulatory people that come in, they look for a Dave this, but they couldn't find it. Can we as a school system get into a problem by not using their legal name instead of using these other names?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, there are some other implications for using alternative names in official documents especially. So, there's a lot of conversation about when you bring a parent into the conversation. And our official stance is if you are using that name and you are changing that name on records, the parent owns the child's education record. So, a parent owns that record, that's federal law until that kid turns 18. And at that point, the record transitions. And so, so there are potential legal implications for changing a name officially in a record and not having that conversation. There are some places in our Infinite Campus, that's our student information system, where you can delineate nicknames and second names and those are a little less official. So, it's really more of a communication tool. So, like if I had, my teachers had access to Infinite Campus, there should probably have been a note that said, do not call him Courtney, right? So, there are spaces for that kind of annotation to happen. That's not necessarily part of the record. But there are implications for that. There are also implications for, for example, if you issue a diploma and the diploma has a name that is different than that individual's legal name, then there can be some concerns there. Because who does that diploma belong to, right? So, there's a sort of, I don't know, chain of custody maybe is a close analogy, kind of concern that you get into there. We also know, we've seen in the higher education space in universities where you can cause real lasting damage to individuals by releasing credentials and records and other names. If you have international exchange students, for example. There are countries in the world where it is illegal to identify as a member of the LGBTQI+ community. Issuing that diploma and a name could cause that person serious legal trouble at home. So, there are some legal complications. We would encourage you, of course, as always, to talk to your board counsel about those issues as you make these local decisions.
Would it be a problem to hold it as a school district, say, hey, unless your name is changed legally, this is what we're going to use down the line?
So, again, I can't provide legal counsel. So, that is a question that, you know, I'm prohibited from doing that, right? But I think there's a, a difficult decision that leaders have to make around using a name out loud casually in class, using a name in the hallway when we're not really in class, using a name on the transcript and diploma. So, I think those are distinct circumstances. And I think that it, it warrants some conversation in the policymaking space around what we're going to do in each of those spaces. Now, I certainly would, would say that for those official documents, whatever that official documented name is, that's probably what should be printed on those for all the reasons that we've just discussed. The other spaces are a little murkier and really that's something that each community is going to have to take into account. I would go again back to that research that we do know using those names is good for kids. And so, I, that's kind of where I would lean based on, on the research that I have access to. But space matters, place matters, time matters. And so, I think it's a heavier issue than that.
If the kids want one name, could you clear that through the parents before you use that?
That's a great question. So, again, a little nuanced. So, kind of hold on with me for a little bit. So, our guidance is that if a kid comes to you in confidence, expecting that you will maintain that confidence as a trusted adult in their life, our advice is that you maintain that confidence, but that you provide those wraparound services to continue to support the child until they can talk to their family. Here's why we have that advice. We know that from the, from the research literature, that when a, when a kid comes to you in confidence and they expect that confidence, confidentiality will be there, when it is not, when there's an involuntary disclosure, we know that that creates an immediate mental health crisis for the student. So, very short, physiologically what happens, the amygdala, that's the like reptilian part of our brain, right? Floods the brain with chemicals and shuts the frontal cortex down. That's our decision-making part of the brain. And so, kids in that state are not able to make a rational decision. They are running on adrenaline and cortisol and raw emotion. And that is not a healthy space for an adolescent to be. So, we discourage that involuntary disclosure. We, we discourage people to, hey, this is a secret. I'm going to now pick up the phone and call mom. But we don't encourage you to keep it a secret. We encourage you to work with that child, provide a safe space. And if necessary, facilitate a conversation with the parent. The one exception to that is, is if there is a physical immediate risk to the child that outweighs that sort of theoretical research risk. And then you already have a statutory obligation to report. So, there's kind of two examples. The first is, hey, Dr. Courtney, I think I'm gay, but don't tell anyone. Okay? So, in that instance, it's, I'm going to give this kid a hug. We're going to have a conversation. I'm going to connect you with our school-based mental health professional. We're going to provide support, eventually try to facilitate a meaningful conversation in a safe way. The other one is, hey, Dr. Courtney, I'm gay and my parents don't like it. I'm going to run away from home. But don't tell anybody. Well, in that case, you better tell somebody because that kid's going to run away from home. That's an immediate, real physical risk. So, again, it's a very heavily nuanced issue. But I hope that maybe I've summarized that sufficiently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Linda?
Linda Duncan, Jefferson County. It almost feels like putting staff in such a vulnerable situation. You know, when a kid comes and tells you you've been abused sexually, you're obligated to report that.
Yeah.
They come and talk to you about this, it's, it, it, it's like, okay, why does that apply? I mean, I don't know how staff is supposed to make all of these distinctions and still be held accountable for anything other than just trying to teach subject. They disclose these things to you. It, it's, it's almost like there's a Child Protective Service issue here going on that is not something a teacher should be dealing with. I mean, I would, I would make a I would, I would probably want to, to refer that student to our mental health counselor and then let that student talk to the health counselor. But I would not want to be the confidant of that, of the student because I, the areas are so, what they can accuse you of and what they can say. I just think you're very vulnerable when you get into these conversations this way. So, I mean, have you, do you know of any instances where these kind of things have led to the, the teacher being in trouble for even having these conversations? Because they're not supposed to have conversations about sexual orientation otherwise. But this is like, okay. So, you know, I don't think, have you had teachers who've gotten into different situations where they've had those conversations and there was a parent that, that objected?
Yeah, so that, that's an excellent point to bring to the table, Linda, because it, it, our teachers are very overburdened with really all of society's ails, right? And that's something that we talk about all the time. And I know as board members and our teacher shortage, you all are also having those conversations. And, and so I'm glad to hear that that's something that's on your mind. A couple of pieces to break down. So I think you would be surprised how much your teachers know about all of your personal business. Because kids do not have a filter and they love their teachers and they build very strong bonds and relationships with them. And they just tell anything and everything. And so teachers are accustomed and trained to take that information in, to compartmentalize that, to do what they need to do with that. You know, if you spend 20 minutes in a kindergarten classroom and you're gonna know whose hamster died and who's getting a divorce and whose dad is getting remarried, and you're gonna know all of that. And so teachers already are trained and prepped to kind of do that. It's part of what we do as educators and in that relationship building. And it's really a sign, I think, of a highly skilled educator, that they have built those deep relationships with youth, that they feel comfortable to come and have those conversations and seek help. Because we also know that if there's not trust in a relationship, then learning isn't happening either. So I think it's a sign of a really healthy and functioning educator. That being said, we are in a difficult societal space right now and in a highly litigious societal space right now. And so there are some cases working through the court system in various states where folks have felt like a teacher has maybe held on too long, has not, maybe not tried as hard as they could have, should have to help that kid come out at home and have those conversations. Where any of that lands, we don't know. None of that legislation is done. So it really is kind of the Wild West a little. Now, there's like a, a case that's relatively recent, you probably saw on the news out of California, where a school counselor is accused of helping a student gender, transition their gender from one to another without anyone's knowledge. That, based on K D E's guidance, that educator went very much too far. It's also my understanding that educator went beyond their own district policies. And so that's kind of a unique case. But I don't know that we've had in Kentucky, any specific instances where a, a teacher has been sued, has gone to court over those issues. Nationally, of course, there are some, there are some, there are also some First Amendment cases happening around the question of whether or not you can require an educator to use a requested name or pronoun. Those are not settled either. So the one thing I would say is really none of this is settled law. Almost all of it is gonna make its way to the Supreme Court in the next five years. And five years from now, we'll be having a very different conversation with a lot more structure and guidance than we have today. I don't know, is that helpful, Linda?
This, this whole subject, I just feel like we're trying to please what the child wants. Are we contributing then to bullying? Because if we call girl he in class, then are we contributing to a bullying environment?
Yeah. No, that's another great point, Linda. And part of our guidance on this issue, and you can download that guidance document and see that, is that part of that ongoing conversation with that youth is helping them understand that there are larger societal consequences to these decisions, that school is not an incubated space, that maybe you feel safe in my classroom and I'm glad that you feel safe and I'm glad that we have a relationship. But if you don't feel safe in the classroom down the hall, then we probably don't need to have this conversation right now. We don't need to change your name and change your pronouns in the moment. We need to work through some of that, those steps first. If you haven't told your parents, then we should not be using your name and pronouns at school, because someone is going to tell your parents, right? School is not an incubated space. And our adolescent youth, they just don't have the brain development. They don't have the world experience to understand that. And so our educators are, need to be prepared to guide students in that direction. And Linda, I think you're exactly right. As a, if I were still in the classroom, I would hug that child, say thank you, and then say, let me get you to our school-based mental health professional who is really qualified to walk this walk with you, because I'm not qualified to do that. And I think a student who you have a relationship with would value and appreciate that. Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna have to move us on. I don't, I don't wanna make sure we get to all of our topics. Matthew, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I do have to scoot to another engagement. But if you've got other questions, send them through the Davids and I'll respond and get it back to you soon as I can.
Thank you so much.
So the rest are me.
Okay, next up on our agenda is Brian Perry. Brian was with you all at our last meeting. He is, of course, the government relations person at K D E, so he's not doing anything. So I'm gonna turn my little laptop around here so you can at least see Brian's face. And, and I hope, because we don't have any speakers, I've got my volume turned up on this thing, I hope you can hear Brian pretty well. Brian, can you say something so we'll see what we've got?
Yeah, can you all hear me?
I think that, I think that works.
All right, well, good evening, thanks for inviting me again. As David mentioned, we are in the middle of, literally the middle of the session. So this year's a 30-day short session. Today was day, legislative day 15 of 30. So we are legislative day-wise halfway there. In terms of the schedule, they'll pretty much be meeting every day, Tuesday through Friday from now until March 17th, at which point they'll enter the veto period. That gives the governor time to take action on any bill that reaches his desk. He can sign it, let it become law without his signature, or veto it. Outside of the budget bill, he does not have line item veto power, so it's an all or nothing veto. Relatively meaningless right now, because it only takes a simple majority vote in each chamber to override a veto. And they'll return on the 29th and 30th for veto override considerations. They can pass legislation for the first time and send it to the governor on those last two days of the session. However, they don't have the option to override the veto, because they can't return until next January, barring the governor calling a special session. So that's kind of the, the quick version of the schedule from now till the end. We're really right in the heart of things, things are really starting to take off. Tuesday and Wednesday were the last day for new bills in each chamber. They dropped, oh, I don't know, something like 250 bills, I think, this week. So we're still sifting through a lot of stuff. I think we're tracking about 160 bills. Obviously, a lot of those are kind of dead on arrival, right? They're not gonna go anywhere. Another big part might get out of a chamber, get out of a committee, but aren't gonna go to the governor for action. So as that said, I asked David kind of what you all were interested in, because there's so much to talk about. He mentioned House Bill 50, Senate Bill 50, these are companion bills that would, among other races, make local school board races partisan. So those, running for those positions would have to put an R, a D, and I next to their name. There's been quite a few articles and talk about this already. There was a really good discussion on Kentucky Tonight, I think about two weeks ago, maybe? I'm starting to lose track of my Kentucky Tonight episodes, but if you check out the website, those, it was a good discussion. And one of the bill sponsors, Leader Thayer over in the Senate, was on the show. So you get to hear him talk about it a little bit. So it's worth listening to if you're, obviously you all, I think, are interested in this topic. So if you didn't see it, check it out. Right now, the House version has not been assigned to committee. The Senate bill has, but has not been given a hearing yet in committee. I would assume that based on the bill sponsors, Senate Bill 50 would be the more likely of the two to move first. I don't know, does it move? I don't know. I think that if it moves, there's a good chance that it gets amended to take out the school board races just based on the conversations that have been happening so far and kind of this unified pushback that it sounds like there is out there against this. That said, you know, it's a member of Senate leadership, so it's kind of a tough call. It is likely one that might come down till the very end. That's about all I have on that one right now. Like I said, things are really just now starting to heat up, because it's a 30-day session. So I'll mention a few other bills and then you all can ask some questions. Senate Bill 1, I think, is the only bill that's been enacted so far. It was signed by the governor on the 17th of February. It's the income tax bill. As I'm sure you all know, it lowers the rate over time, this time to four and a half percent this year, sets the stage for a, for another half percent cut next year. The goal here, obviously, is to expand the sales tax base while they reduce the income tax. I think the proponents think that doing so will make Kentucky more competitive, bring in more business, more employees and taxpayers, and fill the coffers that way. So hopefully it works. Obviously, state education is pretty much wholly reliant on state appropriation. So, or public education is wholly reliant on state appropriation, so we're very reliant. So it's a big deal for those of us in public education, we'll certainly be watching that closely. House Bill 3 is another top priority of the House. This is the juvenile justice bill. It deals with turency, and so I wanted to put that on the radar in case you weren't watching that one. It got out of committee just this week. There's a couple of bills on full-day kindergarten. One of them, House Bill 17, has been assigned to A and R, but has not been heard yet. Chair Tipton has a dual-credit scholarship again this year. I don't know how interested you all are in dual-credit scholarships, but this one is really trying to codify language that's in the budget bill this year, or in last year's budget bill. So current budget language, he is trying to codify that language. This is something that's been a priority of a few different folks for a few different years now. I worked on this on the other side when I was with K C T C S for a couple of years. So that one got out of education committee, but was recommitted to A and R. So I don't know if there's some questions about potential impact there. But I'm guessing it'll get a hearing in A and R sometime soon. House Bill 30 is a little related to the conversation you all just had. It's the student privacy bill related to facilities, so lock, restrooms, locker rooms, showers. It would require students to use the facilities that relate to their sex at birth. However, it does require the districts provide an alternative space for students that identify otherwise. My understanding is a lot of districts are already doing this, so that's good. This bill, I thought would, I thought this bill was gonna move pretty quickly when it got filed, but it's not been assigned to committee yet. So it's one that could still get assigned later on and move pretty quickly at that point. Or there may be a different version out there coming, I don't know. Just wanted to mention it, since it has a pretty clear impact for the districts. Let's see, House Bill 32 got out of the House, 95 to nothing is now open in the Senate. That would allow for the hiring of classified personnel without a high school diploma or equivalent. See, there were a number of vaccine, mask, health mandate bills that were filed early in the session. Of those, right now, only House Bill 101 appears to be moving. It would prevent the K B E from requiring students to receive the COVID-19 vaccine in order to attend schools. It's been assigned to health services, and that's where they split the old, the old committee. FAFSA's a high school graduation requirement appears to not be moving. And this may be the last year we see this one for a while. I think this is year four for it. I thought that it might have had some potential this year, because it did include a waiver, an opt-out provision for folks that didn't wanna fill out the FAFSA. You also have FAFSA simplification, I think, coming this fall. That was something that they got done at the federal level. I wanna say Senator Alexander out of Tennessee did it before he retired, but I've kind of forgotten. But I believe that goes into effect this fall. And the complication, or the lengthy FAFSA application was always kind of a stumbling block. We'll talk a little bit more about this later on, but there's a couple of parental rights bills in the House. 173 and 177 are up there. They're not moving right now, but we'll circle back to that. 174 in the House was a education funding constitutional amendment. Probably not likely to go this year, but could come back next year, because constitutional amendments can't go on the ballot this time around, but they can in '24. So I think that that one's one that might come back up next year, but I think is unlikely to move this year. One that I think the department is supportive of and is interested in is House Bill 196. This is the Safe Kentucky bill from Representative Fleming. It's been assigned to health services. This is somewhat of an expansion of the existing Stop-Tip Line, but it's an app. It's based on the Safe Utah app. It in, essentially is in conjunction with Peace Hospital U of L. They would essentially have a group of mental health professionals on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You know, and so students and staff could connect with them, I think, instantaneously via an app. So it's really related to mental health services. I think it's a really neat idea. Our student, I never can remember the name of our student group, student council, but they, their recommendations related to safe schools that they started working on after the Uvalde shootings last year, that they presented to Chair Tipton a month or so ago. One of their big focuses was mental health as it relates to school safety. So I think they're gonna be real interested in that bill. So we'll see if it goes anywhere. Some of you might be interested in this one, not really sure, but we've been working with the Kentucky National Guard on a bill for their youth challenge programs. It would make them district-like. It's important to note that I think there's been a little miscommunication there. But they would not be a district, they would be district-like. But it would allow them to do some stuff that they're interested in. We've helped craft the language for them, but they are running the bill. It got out of V map committee the other day. It was posted for passage today in the House, but I don't know if it got a vote or not. I was trying to watch both chambers. House Bill 288 is a teacher misconduct bill. That one is related to the articles from the Herald Leader a few months ago. We are trying to help them close some loopholes as it relates to teachers that might have an allegation out there in change districts. The allegation never gets resolved, so there's no, so they sort of have an accountability aspect to that. So that one, I don't think has been assigned to committee yet. It's a, it was one that got filed here recently. Chair Tipton has filed a couple of bills, I think, that are mostly for conversation. 289 is one of those, provides a merger process for contiguous school districts. So obviously, I think that's gonna be a pretty, pretty touchy subject, but I think that he is wanting to get that conversation out there. So I'm thinking that's why he filed that one. 319 is Chair Tipton's Teacher Recruitment and Retention Omnibus Bill. This is one that the department worked on quite a bit with, along with C P E, KIA, and some others. It was reported favorably out of committee, I think this, just this week. It's got a lot of stuff in it. A lot of stuff got taken out, because this is not a budget year. So a lot of stuff that had appropriations attached to it got removed. I think that 319 is trying to set the stage for Chair Tipton to come back next session with some budget requests related to teacher recruitment and retention. So that's, that's what's going on with that one. If you're wondering why it got pared down quite a bit. But don't, I don't want people to think that teacher recruitment or retention has fallen off the radar or that this is the end of the conversation. I think that it's been very clear from the chairman that this is the first step in what's gonna be a, a long process to address that issue. So there's a lot of new House bills this week, and I'll just mention some of them. Most of these have not been assigned even to a committee yet, because they literally just dropped in the past few days. House Bill 5, and actually, Jay might wanna weigh on this one later, but this is relating to the bourbon barrel tax. I know there was a task force about this last year, and I think that this impacts school districts. So I wanted to put it on the radar. 389, House Bill 39 is a comprehensive reading program. This is related to the C C L D contract that you may have followed la, last fall. 390 provides financial incentives to reduce teacher shortages. I think that this is, was filed by Chairwoman Banta and is getting at paying for student teaching, which again, has been part of the conversation really for about a year now, since the commissioner presented at the first interim joint last session, or last interim. 421 is a school facilities and construction bill. 49 is relates, is a student discipline bill. There's a couple of those out there now. 504 is another one of Chairman Tipton's bills that I think is a conversation starter. And it's about school funding moving from ADA to ADM. 538 is another student discipline bill. I don't think all these discipline bills are gonna move, but because they just dropped, it's unclear which ones might, which one will eventually be the one that moves. I think one gets across the finish line, just unclear right now which one that is. 547 is a, I don't even know how, I don't know what to call this one, a staff protection bill, maybe? Staff protection bill maybe prohibits the school district from punishing an employee for engaging in private religious expression otherwise protected by the First Amendment, absence of showing of engaging in actual coercion. So five fifty is one you may have heard about. Or related to something you might have heard about, we'll get to in the Senate bills, but it's, it would require the Commissioner of Education to be subject to Senate confirmation. All right, that's the super fast version of what's going on in the House. The very abbreviated version, right? But let's run through the Senate real quick and I'll take some questions. Senate Bill three just dropped, but it is already passed out of committee. This is an educator employment liability insurance program. I'm a little unclear exactly what this is doing. I have not seen a bill review on this one yet, although I know our legal counsel has it on their radar and will be getting that done soon. So if there are any questions, come back in a day or two and we should have those for you. Senate Bill five passed out of the Senate just a little while ago. I know there's been a lot of talk about this being a book banning bill. But I think that it is much more of a complaint resolution policy. And would require districts to set up a complaint process for parents that feel like there are inappropriate materials in the school library. I think a lot, again, I think a lot of districts already have policies about this. But again, it passed out of the Senate just a little while ago, so it'll head to the House. Senate Bill nine also, I think, passed out of the Senate this afternoon. It removes eligibility for keys if you're convicted of hazing. Senate Bill twenty-five, I think, is one that you all are very interested in. It's the post-secondary readiness indicator. It picked up a committee sub regarding the three hundred hours provision. So I think there's some still, some conversation about how to make that work exactly if it's not connected to a course. But I know our Office of Career and Technical Education is having conversations with various stakeholders about that. So that one passed out of the Senate thirty-five zero on the fourteenth of February, but has not been assigned in the House yet. But I would think that it will get assigned in the House. It has a, it is sponsored by one of Senate leadership. So Senate Bill sixty-three is the Crown Act. It's relating to hairstyles, protected hairstyles. So posted for passage today, but was retained in the orders of the day, but not acted on. Uh, let's see. Senate Bill seventy, I think, also, yep, passed out of the Senate today, thirty-five to nothing. This, this was a pilot project that was supposed to be started right before COVID hit and has been delayed. But it is the implementing the performance-based professional development pilot project. It just moves the timeline. So now that it would run from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-five, twenty-six and have KD report on it. No later than, I think, interim of twenty-seven. So just changing the dates. Senate Bill one oh seven also passed out of the Senate today. That is the one that not only would require the commissioner to be confirmed by the Senate, but also create a nominating board that would send KBE nominations to the governor for appointment. So kind of a dual, then in House Bill five fifty does not have that nominating board component. It just has the confirmation of the commissioner. And I do want to point out that it's not just us. This is a thing, right? So K E T also has a bill out there that would require their board members to be confirmed by the Senate. So this is, it's not just KD, KD and KBE. Just wanted to point that out. So Senate Bill one fifty also passed, has also passed out of the Senate, but has not been signed in the House yet. This is a parental rights slash communication bill, depending on who you're talking to. Let's see. One fifty-six would establish a statewide reading research center. It's been assigned to Senate Ed. It's sponsored by the chairman, so it'll definitely get a hearing there. I fully suspect that this one gets out of the Senate. I would think that it gets across the finish line because of kind of what transpired last year with the CCLD contract. SB one sixty-nine got out of committee this afternoon. It grants a local Board of Education the authority to enter into a P three on behalf of the local school district, so a public-private partnership. Then a couple of new bills in the Senate, again, that just dropped this week that haven't really been reviewed or moved yet or been assigned to committee yet. Two oh two is another student discipline bill, also from Chairman West, I believe. And two forty-seven would allow eligible students to have the option to remain in the same school when changing residents within the same school district. So I thought that would be one that you all would be interested in. So again, that's the super high-level version of what's happening over in the Senate. With that said, are there any questions? I know that's a really fast version of, of a lot of stuff that's happening. Again, we're a long way from the finish line, even though we're technically halfway through the session. So with that said, if there's questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Hey Brian, I know more than one person at this table is interested. I think there's a bill that incorporates a student board member.
Yep, there's a, there's actually a couple of different versions. None of them have moved at all yet. So I didn't, I tried not to include a I tried to pare down the, the hundred and sixty bills. So, but yes, there are a couple of bills out there. One that would add local, would add student members to local boards. Another that would add a voting member to the KBE. So I don't know if those have ever been filed before, so it's, it's good to see them be filed from our standpoint. Obviously, I think we would be supportive of that. We haven't had a lot of conversations about them with all the other stuff going on. But, yes, they are out there, but I do not, I don't think they've even been assigned to committee at this point.
This is Linda Duckett, Jefferson County. You mentioned too, that I'm interested in, if you can elaborate a little bit, because I don't remember how, what else, what, all those involved in these. But attendance is a huge issue for us. People think since COVID came, attendance is optional apparently. But you say there is a truancy bill. It's there. What was that?
Well, there, it's House Bill three, and it's a, it's a big bill and does a lot, but that is part of it. But I'm not exactly sure what it, what it does. We haven't talked a whole lot about that one just yet. But it's House Bill three, so it's a top priority of the House.
How about the discipline bills that you mentioned? There are a couple of those. What?
Yeah, those all dropped this week, so we are just now starting to review and talk about those. So unfortunately, being a day or two after the filing deadline means that there's a lot of bills that have, have been filed now officially, but we haven't had a chance to really go through. And it's, it's very unclear right now which of those will move, because I think there's three, three-ish versions out right now. They all won't move, but it's a little unclear what gets across the finish line. I think one of them will. It's been a very big topic of conversation. So I think one of them does go to the governor for action. It's just a matter of kind of what the final version looks like. So.
I had a question. Julie Fisher, Bellevue Independent. I believe you said it was House Bill three eighty-nine about the comprehensive reading program. Do you have any more details on that? I'm interested in reading being such a very important piece of our
No, that, no, but we can certainly connect you to the Office of Teaching and Learning. So Mickey Ray, our chief academic officer, has been real involved in that work. And I think, I think that she will be helping present on that here very soon. We, I thought it might get a hearing this week, but it did not. So I would suspect that next, we'll see that on the agenda for next week, I would imagine, in Senate Education. So that's one we're very supportive of as a department. And again, Mickey Ray has been real involved in that work. So we'll be happy to connect you with her.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Brandon Rutherford with Mass County Schools. Where, what are you hearing the movement on Senate Bill fifty is? Because I'm the one that affects probably most because I'm federal firefighters. I follow the Hatch Act. So I'm the, I'm the mysterious firefighter.
We're talking about Senate Bill, the partisan school board elections?
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's hard to say, right? I think that there's been a lot of, kind of, when it first dropped, there was quite a bit of conversation about it and quite a bit of concern. You know, about the, the possibility of making a school board races partisan in such a polarized time. And do we really want another polarizing board, you know, and to inflict and input, inject more politics into this than there already is? So I tend to think not this session. I, I think I wouldn't be surprised because Leader Thayer is a sponsor of SB fifty to see it get out of the Senate eventually. Do I think it goes to the governor for action? No, not this session. That's just kind of a hunch, because I think this is the first time it's been introduced. So it's a big change. It's not often that we see big change get introduced, kind of like that, where we haven't really been talking about it during the interim. And see it go through both chambers in one session. Now, would I be surprised if it gets out of committee or even out of the Senate? No. Would I be surprised if it gets refiled next session? No. So I think there's some interest there and, you know, from, from some folks to see that happen. So, and I wouldn't be surprised if, if it moves forward, but gets amended to take school board races out for now, right? So we could see a version go forward where judicial races or something else gets, gets that, but not school boards for now. But again, I wouldn't be surprised to see it come back in another session. So I think this is the first time it's been introduced. So, yeah, stay tuned.
Yep, before we move on. Brian, thank you so much.
Oh, sure.
And you probably know that by now, anytime we're in the middle of a session, you're going to be asked to come to this.
That's what I'm here for.
So you, you'll get out of the next meeting, which will be this summer, but we'll probably have you back when we get closer to.
Well, I'm not nearly as entertaining as Che is, so.
Yeah, so.
I'll let him take over.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present, I present to you now Shay Ritter. Shay is a good friend. And is all things, knows all things Larry, Seek and other issues related to, as we said in our topic discussion of teacher teacher salaries and raising teacher salaries. So Che, whatever, Shay, whatever you want to talk about, and then these folks can ask you questions. You're muted.
That was a test on you, David. You passed. Good work. Very proud of my KDE counterparts that notify you immediately that you've been muted. I've only done that for like three years straight now. So, yeah, I'm like the opposite of Brian. I'll give you some bad legislative advice. But, so I thought tonight, if it's okay, I, I know you all had some questions. I must definitely want to answer what I can of those. And one of them was about teacher raises. And before I left the office today, I went back and looked at, and I forgot, I was going through some old emails. There's actually on our website. If you'll email me, I'll be glad to send it to you, but it's historically what state mandated raises there have been for teachers over the years. It's kind of an interesting chart. You can tell back probably in the nineties, there were quite a few. We get into the early two thousands and about the time I started at KDE, about oh seven, oh eight, they started to, there were a handful. It's kind of started to get a little more spotty and then all of a sudden it's kind of gone to zero. So you can take that for what it's worth. It's a bit interesting to me too, that, you know, when you do a state mandated raise of course, salary schedule, it kind of raises all ships, if you will. And of course, when you do one locally, that just raises your salary schedule and then you become either, you know, the top payer in your region or more competitive with your neighbors. I noticed the other day, there was a county that was already talking about how they were going to incentivize keeping teachers for a couple of years. So it's a very hyper competitive environment right now. So I think teacher raises are always going to be on the front burner. But as far as the funding, it's a pretty expensive thing. Now, if you look at this one, this cycle was a little different. I know the governor's proposed was a little different because he was actually trying to do it across the board for all staff, which includes, you know, certified and classified. And that's probably in the neighborhood of north of three hundred million dollars. So pretty expensive thing to do. And that's a recurring cost. That includes fringe, so your pension liability, health insurance, et cetera. It kind of averages out. So, but, you know, with ester funding at the state level, of course, much like your districts, the state's in pretty good financial position. But we'll see what comes out of this session. And kind of like Brian, at this point, when they start dropping all those bills, we sort of sit back and wait to see which ones kind of float to the top. And this is a non-budget year, which is probably busier for us for some reason. I don't know why, but it is. So we don't see a lot of movement on, you know, big financial decisions, but quite a bit of good conversation, I think, for the next session. Which I, I'm usually, I would say halfway optimistic after some discussions with legislators that they always have interest in, you know, pushing more money toward public schools for various things. You know, transportation funding is always a topic, the per pupil amount and SEEK. I know one question, you know, I had, and I'll try to segue into that, was if SEEK itself would be changing anytime soon. That's a very large question. As some of you know, there was sort of a task force back in the summer that I presented at and quite a few people presented at, and it was sort of a review of SEEK, some of the superintendents. Devona Page was there, Mike Borchers from Ludlow, Dr. Fletcher from Lawrence County. I'm trying to remember Representative Tipton, who always seems to be involved in education stuff. But it was a really good opportunity to walk through not only the formula and the history of it, but also some suggestions from these districts. And of course, for every district, your mileage may vary. I noticed a few of you all in there. Jefferson's in the room, Nelson, Madison. And I believe Bellevue, if I heard correctly. So everyone's got a little bit different perspective when it comes to SEEK funding. Districts that have, you know, very high property assessments, they're impacted very differently than districts have a low property assessment. So I think going forward, what we'll see is more small changes, or if we can get some steam behind big changes. We'll see those pop up. I don't see a massive overhaul all at once. It may be bits and pieces over the years. It's a heavy lift to do one big package and change all these things around. And also, you know, there's associated costs with it. And interestingly enough, just today, we started reading, it's House Bill five oh four, again, by Representative Tipton. And this is his, I guess, now twice annual bill to switch from average daily attendance to average daily membership. If you've had some attendance issues this year, you can raise your hand, because I think this bill is to help address that a little bit. Probably, gosh, when it was much colder a couple of months ago, we reached out to quite a few districts and superintendents to kind of pick their brains on what they saw at the ground level. Illness, just disengagement. Of course, floods didn't help displacement of students. You name it, we've experienced it and it's really impacted attendance. So ADM, basically what it is, if you took your average daily attendance and removed a whole lot of adjustments, it's still not average daily membership. So average daily membership, sorry, it's my dog barking at the late mailman for that noise. But that average daily membership is basically paying for students who are there and not necessarily there. So when you, you know, when you're paying teachers and building schools, it's assuming that all the students are there. You build for all the students. You staff for all the students. Attendance is, it obviously, it's important. Kind of hard to learn if you're not there. And so we've kind of tossed around ideas of how you incentivize attendance. And I don't think there's really a, a great straight answer to that. Some counties, or I should say some districts rather, averaged ninety-six percent attendance year after year after year, except this year. Some probably in the low nineties. I think if I went back and looked, most districts are in the kind of mid to low nineties, depending on illness and weather. And the average daily attendance calculation is fairly complicated, and there's some adjustments for virtual and performance-based students. Your low attendance days, a lot, quite a few of those are tossed out. But with average daily membership, one of the keys there is we could actually technically do it in the current year. Whereas Seek, excuse me, looks in the prior year for funding. With the average daily membership, we could pull it today and fund you on it in a week. But his bill actually is looking at the prior year still. So we're still kind of reviewing it. We haven't gone through it line by line. We will probably next week, I would guess, and issue out some guidance as to, or as far as our comments on it to the General Assembly. Don't know if it has much of a shot this session, but he's kind of repeatedly said when I was in the room, he wants to keep it out there, it kind of planned. he wants to keep it out there, kind of plant the seed, if you will. He thinks it's an important bill. As do we. I think it's really important to discuss that and, you know, hopefully have some good discussions on it. Another one real quick. Brian mentioned House Bill five, the distilled spirits. I know that impacts a few of you all in the room. Now, like Nelson County, for example, I'm in Franklin County, so it impacts us. It's 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 a little bit different. It started out they were going to exempt the distilled spirits tax, which generates quite a bit for a few districts. Of course, as that industry expanded, they have a footprint now in probably it's about thirty districts or so. Mostly counties. There's a few in independents, not many. But as it's grown, of course, like any business, their property assessments grow, thus their tax revenue that goes to schools also grows. So as they're very profitable right now, they would like to exempt that barrel tax and that would cost districts across the state a little bit south of twenty million dollars, which doesn't sound like a whole lot when you're talking about billions. But it's, like I said, thirty districts and it would take a couple million out of some of these districts. So it's very, very important. So the bill that's been proposed has graduated, meaning they're going to exempt it portions at a time starting in twenty twenty six. So it gives you some breathing room on time when it starts. Three percent of the tax and then six percent of the tax the next year, nine percent. Eventually you get to twenty thirty nine, and I'm sure I'll still look this young. It's a hundred percent. So eventually, this is a very slow drip to exemption. I don't know if any of us will still be going in twenty thirty nine. I hope we are. But this was one that during, I guess, last year, we heard there were a lot of meetings with impacted districts. I know Police Senator Higdon, who's out of Washington and Marion County, that region. Of course, Marion's got a big distilled spirits footprint. So this impacts quite a few. And surprisingly, you know, I grew up in Franklin County, so I saw the industry sort of bottom out back in the eighties and nineties and sort of picked back up. Of course, I see what Buffalo Trace has built and all their warehouses. We will be awash in bourbon very soon, and I'm sure it's going to cost them dearly in taxes. So this has been quite the lobbying effort by their Distilled Spirits Association to exempt this tax. David, is there anything else I can answer? I'll be glad to.
I think if anybody has any any questions for Shay, we can, Larry, Mr. Seek over here in the corner, Larry Dodson from Oldham County seems to have some questions for you.
I've got two or three at one.
All right.
And one, the governor wants to give everybody raises. Now that relates back to Seek because he may provide the funding for the first year, but where does it fall in the second, third, fourth year because it's going to be reoccurring? Secondly, on the Seek formula, we're one of the bottom, we're about eight from the bottom. So you can see why I keep keep getting upset about it. We just recently raised our taxes for four cents. And we had to give twenty five billion dollars back to the state out of that. And I know they don't want to do anything with Seek because I've been hollering about it for fourteen years. But why not? On the when tax time comes to raise, they just set it up where the districts keep the money that they raise the taxes. Don't change the Seek formula. Let's keep that money that they raise the taxes. And hey, I'd be happy if it lets keep every other year. Twenty five million dollars is a lot of money. But what happens? We raise taxes, we give twenty five million dollars back. And schools at the top of the list don't raise it because they get our money. Everybody above us gets part of our money. So I was wondering if that could be approached for Seek, and I was concerned about the reoccurring expenses for teachers' raises if they size up again.
Sure. So a solution on the recurring expenditure or excuse me, recurring raises, and it's, you know, pretty, pretty simple. It's a little different from, you know, when we're working on the math and usually the governor's office will say, this is what we want to do. And I'm just going to throw out a number and say, we want to do a three percent raise across the board. You know, we'll figure out a cost of that. And then we'll run it through the formula and say, okay, that's going to be about two hundred dollars per pupil. So they'll build that into their budget request. So from that point going forward, that amount is usually built in there. Now, the trick is the General Assembly's got to agree with it too. And then they got to keep going year after year after year. They have to keep either level or, you know, keep adding to that. And historically, the state has kept that per pupil amount level or raised it, you know, right now, I think we're at forty one hundred and next year it's forty two hundred. This next budget, I'm just going to throw out a number, maybe they run it up to forty five hundred, depending on, you know, what they want to do. But and this gets right into your assessment conversation. That doesn't do a lot of good when you lose so much of Seek due to property assessments increasing. This last year, and I'm sure everyone in the room witnessed it right in front of their eyes, property assessments really skyrocketed in a hurry. And as I drive around the state, and this is what you do when you're not paying attention to where you're driving, you're looking at all these homes for sale. A house that was a hundred thousand ten years ago is two hundred and fifty thousand. I drive through Nelson County occasionally and just laugh at the number of warehouses. It's like new cathedrals, basically. That impacts every tax dollar that you get, obviously. But it also impacts the Seek money you're getting. So if I called Oldham up or Oldham County up tomorrow and said good news, you're going to get forty four hundred dollars per pupil. Well, it's a little bit of that Frankfurt math because technically you're probably getting something like twenty two hundred after we take out that local effort in Seek. But if I go down the road to, I'm just pick on another county, a nameless county that has lower property assessments, they'll get more of that forty four hundred. So there's been conversations over the years and i- if you really want to sleep well at night, you can read some studies they did on how that assessment impacts. And Oldham's got a really long history of this. Ever since I've been at K D E, you know, property assessments have grown, you know, very quickly there, which puts you all in a very strange position. It's wonderful to have that growth, but at the same time, it's almost a curse because all your money is going to end up being local. You're not, you know, what you're putting into the game, you know, we're all pitching in, but you all pitch in more than we do, for example, in Franklin County. The same goes for Jefferson, of course, your neighbor. And there's a lot of counties with very high property wealth. So that's sort of the point of the formula when you go back to the original intent. However, as we go back, that was in the early nineties when that started, and it's been quite a while that since that's been reviewed. And there's a lot of options I think you could look at as, you know, how do you take what Oldham and Jefferson, and I'm just going to throw out a few, Fayette pitch in and delegate that out to other districts appropriately. But at the same time, if you will, keep Oldham from losing ground. Because eventually you're all's tax rates become, you know, pretty healthy. And then it's a little hard for you all to maybe land a factory because, well, you know, our tax rates are higher than our neighbors because, you know, just our land values. So all economic developments impacted. You got great schools, of course. So that's that's always a big plus in any community. But it may cost more to live there. And then basically that costs more to live there ends up driving up your tax rates too. Independents will always have that struggle as well. Their their equation is a little different. I'm a little sensitive to that because of where I live with Frankfurt Independent in my backyard. For them to function and succeed, they have to have a higher tax rate. And I used to joke with their former superintendent. He always wanted to annex Buffalo Trace Distillery from Franklin County, and I told him it probably wasn't going to happen anytime soon. I appreciated the thought, but he's landlocked. If you're familiar with Frankfurt, his line went up to K S U on the hill. It went down toward Buffalo Trace and ba- basically the bowl in downtown, and that's it. So not a lot of factories, not a lot of businesses, very residential. So they had to kind of, you know, be pretty nimble when they made decisions. So and I think every independent, you know, has that struggle of being landlocked in and stuff like that. I think there will always be a good opportunity through, you know, these K groups, K S B A being one of them, to have this discussion with legislators. I think the more you educate, the better chance you have of getting getting in the room with them and kind of explaining the problem. There are, you know, what I would say, some very, very specific issues. We have districts like Anchorage, Lyon and Livingston. They're hell harmless because of their property values. Their property values are so high that the formula, if without this hold harmless provision, would actually hurt them financially. So there's a hold harmless provision. And it's just, it's strange math, you know, Lyon and Livingston County and Anchorage, which I think you all are in Louisville tonight, so you're pretty close to Anchorage, but their property is just very expensive on a per pupil basis, and that's what causes that. And I hope I answered your question, though.
Not totally. The problem with the formula they use, with all this COVID money came out, every district around us got billions and we got three hundred thousand. And I've talked to or you talked to the legislative people. I will be first to tell you, might as well top this wall in here. Because their problem is they need the folks from everybody above them. They're not going to stir up the pot to get us a little bit we need.
Yeah, I'll tell you, it's interesting. I was actually at a, this has been several years ago, J C P S. And when I, when the gentleman asked me this, I just, it kind of blew my mind, but he had mentioned J C P S and their struggles with property assessments. But he's, he said, why don't they split the county in half and fund it that way? And I said, well, what do you mean? And he said, well, you know, we're very heavy on the east end of Jefferson County with very high property values. But as you go west, the values are what he called more normalized. And I thought, well, that's a very interesting concept that, you know, you would have a split formula for, and this was Jefferson County, that because of the nature of, you know, home values and property values in the east end being a little higher, it would benefit J C P S to, you know, have by sub formula, if you will, for the other end of the county. But, you know, thoughts like that and thinking through, you know, how do you, how do you rectify this for Oldham County? Do you put a limit on what you all pay in for your local effort? You're paying twenty five million. What if that was capped? You know, what if once you hit that, you didn't pay any more in? There's a lot of things. Instead of a thirty cent local effort per one hundred dollars, what if you, you know, based on your local taxes, got a credit of five cents per? That ends up saving you a couple million bucks a year right there. Of course, everything you move in that formula ends up hitting the state budget, and that's the hard sell right there usually.
All right, I'm gonna. I'm going to cut us off right there. We want to value everybody's time, and I know several of these folks are probably starving. Not anymore, dying eight before she got here. Shay, thank you so much, buddy, for being here and.
Yes, sir. I'll be up there Saturday if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. One real quick thing before we get, let you all get out of here, we're going to go ahead and shut it down. Now that Julie is here. We, she had made a request that we consider moving our time back to six P M. On these nights, just for the sake of travel to get here, since it is that, you know, before the conference, actually. And I just, it's just a question. I guess we just could take a vote, David, or.
Yeah, bring up something. I I agree with you. But we go bowling green. I have to move something different.
Yeah, I think that's, I think we'll have to.
Do you? Will it take you longer than the time to come here if you went with the Griffin Gate to get there at six?
Well, when we go to Griffin Gate and it's in the summer, it's no problem.
Okay.
Problem is teaching and that was one of the reasons why Thursday worked for me because I go out and teach all day.
Okay.
Now, Larry brought up Bowling Green. You know, we're on September time. So it's not. Yeah, but right now we are.
Yeah. So the the when which meeting is it at the year?
We're not this year, but next year.
So that it won't be as bad because by then we won't have the time change.
But it's in Bowling Green. So you're looking at quite a bit of drive.
I think what what I would suggest, folks, is that we make vote to make the change and then we can adjust it back if we need to, but we'll if we could, if we could just agree that in a general sense, we'll do six o'clock. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. Thank you. That was easy. Thank you all again so much. I know David has, David said at the top of the meeting, this is so much, it's so much nicer for everybody that we do it this way. It gets. Yeah, there there are better meetings because you all are here and we're together and next time I'm going to dang well make sure my boss is in the room. So we don't have to. You know what? I'm going to tell you something. The last meeting, he really enjoys you all. He really does enjoy meeting with you guys. He likes to talk about the things you want to talk about. So and he was just out of town. He couldn't be here. So.
I brought this up at the beginning of the meeting too. With our agenda, the way we do it now, we get to discuss what the board deals with more than what the staff did. So your input into the agenda on what, you know, what we're dealing with each each meeting we have, we need to get as much of it as we can.
I appreciate getting the agendas out early like you did because it gives me time to ask the superintendent, you know, what else.
Sure.
Yeah. Sir, I have a board member and as a teacher is so many of our, not, I mean, salary, of course, is a big thing. But also, and I don't know whether this in the district, but so many of young teachers, I'm mentoring a couple in my district, but I've had one last year that I ventured. We not a formal program like K T I P or whatever. But they are not lasting. Because I think K T I P was not perfect. But I feel like something like that for young teachers because it's I I can still remember, my daughter's a teacher, she, I saw it the first day after school and she was, she was crying because it was just, you know, it was overwhelming. And I have even a teacher in my district who, where I'm on the board, she's forty years old and coming from corporate. Again, she didn't have that. So I'm just throwing that out of the, I know money's a problem and all that kind of thing, but I'm just throwing out. We, you know, we lose so many teachers in the first couple of years, and it's not just some. It's because they need a lot more support. People can give what they're doing their teaching. So I'm throwing that out.
I can certainly share that back to, back to the.
And also option six. We've got teachers that truly hate to say it, but they really don't know how to manage. They haven't been through enough. They're so short.
Yeah.
You know, shorter teachers that they don't even know how to make a system plan.
Yeah.
Where they don't know how to situate their class and it just infuriates. I guess because I worked in schools for so long, you never had such a chance to pick up on that. We need to fill that gap.
One thing that we did also is we started asking is we do these coaches. We've got each school and we we started out a couple of schools and each year it built on and on and on. That is how their schools were doing anything. Yes. And I mean, these two or three people that we deem as play math coaches or reading recovery or whatever. That's literally out in their science today schools. And each year as something becomes available, we're able to afford it. We may add a school and then we add a teacher and we it's a tremendous help.
But we need that. I think the management even gone through, I mean, I remember my first couple of years trying to feel my way through it. The the management piece and I totally.
That's what the coaches do. They they come in and they sit and watch a class.
And then.
So they do.
Was it just after?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they they come in, they sit in the class and they watch them teach their lessons. They just sit in the back of the room. And then they help the teacher say, hey, if you try this, this might help. Hey, if you try this, this is not filled up. It's just, hey, this is something I observed. We've seen it been like Gibson, that's it.
Then again, if you want to go to college, college doesn't give you the teaching. We still need.
Yeah.
And we have a coach, you know, we have a coach as well who is doing the same kind of thing. A new teacher and management is, if you don't have the management, you can't do any teaching. So the management is a big piece of it, and she's helping them with that, actually going in there, modeling, there's a ton of chip. But we, if we can ask kind of.
Sure.
Doesn't necessarily have to be with K T I P because K T I P just kept getting bigger.
No, not that, but I'm just saying something.
Yeah. Okay. Last, last word gets to go to my comms director, Moni Konstadtman. And she has just one and wants to make an announcement to you guys.
Just one little announcement, and I think it's a link to an hack code to you guys. So Simpson County is in Congressional District One. And so we are right now, um, accepting applications for our teacher and our students that are on the Kentucky Board of Education. Uh, the teacher will come from District One. And then Whitley County, we're looking for students. So if you know of a current sophomore, this is just for the student, if you know of a current sophomore now who will be a senior this fall, they are eligible to apply. They live in the fifth Congressional District. If you have any questions on that, feel free to email David and get you in touch or myself. And we'll get you in touch. The applications are due for both the teacher and the student on March 6. Uh, the student has a little bit more to do. They've got to get a couple of letters, recommendations. So I don't recommend waiting until the last minute, which I know a lot of students like to. So, okay. So I know our Teacher of the Year app just came in and we had 100 before for like six weeks. And that last day, we had our 25 come in. So it was a little crazy, but just wanted to let you all know. So it's District Five and District One. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. As always, we will see you in July, and we'll get more information out to you as we get closer.